Your generous time. For each case, there will be a public hearing. We ask that the applicant keep their presentation to under 10 minutes. They may reserve 2 minutes as a rebuttal. We ask that the public keep their comments to 2 minutes unless they have previously requested in writing for 5 minutes as a representative of a group or organization. Pursuant to the provision of Section 2.68.030 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws, notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County. This is statutory writ of certiorari. You are advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision of the Historic Zoning Commission. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. Robin, are there any changes to our agenda today?
Yes, 1,005 Mansfield is an SP, and staff is requesting that that be moved to consent. It's not a typical SP. It's really just for a DADU and a single-family, an otherwise single-family zone property. Applicant for 300 Broadway has requested a deferral. This will be their second deferral. And 921 Benton, the applicant, has requested that that be removed from the consent agenda so that could be moved to the front of MHCC actions.
Okay. Thank you for that, and we will need to vote on the changes to the adoption. Is there a motion?
There's a motion.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
So the adoption of the agenda passes. Are there any council members here? None. And also approval of our minutes of April 17. Is there a motion or questions? There's a motion. Is there a second? Second, all in favor. Okay. Unanimously approved. Thank you. Ready for consent?
Thank you. Hello. Good afternoon. The consent agenda this month includes 1401 Lilian Street, new construction, addition and outbuilding; 909 Manila Avenue, new construction, addition; 200 Falls Street, new construction, addition; 101 Broadway, signage; 2811 Belmont Boulevard, new construction, addition and DADU; 921 Benton has been moved from the consent agenda as mentioned; 1720 Sweetbrier Avenue, new construction of an addition and outbuilding; and 1,005 Mansfield, as mentioned a minute ago, has been added to the consent agenda. Staff has reviewed these applications, finds that they meet the respective district's design guidelines, and recommends approval of the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions, commissioners? I'll make approval. There's a motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Okay. Approved as recommended.
Could we...
Does the screen down there work?
It does. Yes, it does. Could we double-check with the public on consent agenda items?
So...
Or did I miss that? Did we check and ask if anyone wanted?
We did not. So we're gonna backtrack. Is there anyone that has any comments on the consent agenda? All right. We will... Is that sufficient for recording? Thank you for reminding us, Robin. I seem to always forget that.
All right. So the first item on the agenda is an application to construct a townhome development at the corner of Edge Hill Avenue and Villa Place. The project requires rezoning to a specific planned district or SP. The current proposal is for approval of the overall massing and site plan only. If the SP is approved by Metro Council, then the project will return to the commission for final review with all of the other details. So the site includes three parcels, as shown on the screen, at the northwest corner of Edge Hill Avenue and Villa Place. Two of the parcels are currently vacant, and one parcel has an existing non-contributing building. Staff has already administratively issued the preservation permit to demolish the non-contributing house. So the proposal is for a 10-unit townhome development in two buildings with four units and a building oriented toward Edge Hill Avenue and six units in a building fronting Villa Place. Access to the site will be from the existing rear and side alleys, and all parking will be interior to the site. Both buildings will be located close to the street. The proposed setbacks, staff finds, can be appropriate. Here is the context in the immediate area for non-single-family structures. There is context for those types of uses to be located closer to the sidewalk. In addition, the proposed setback is more typical and appropriate for this type of building form, as a deeper setback essentially would make... Sorry. They're more appropriate than a deeper setback, as it would allow for parking to be located entirely behind the buildings. So this is the building fronting Edge Hill Avenue. It's supposed to be three stories with a height of approximately 42 feet 6 inches from grade to the top of parapet. And looking at the context, the historic context along Edge Hill Avenue includes single- and two-story commercial structures. So the photo on the top are properties to the right of the site across Villa Place, which includes single-story as well as three-story non-contributing buildings. The three-story buildings there are between 38 feet and 42 feet tall. In this section, there's also a one-and-one-half-story historic home at 1508 Edge Hill Avenue. And the photo below is the two-story commercial development directly across the street from the site. So the photo on the top here is Catty Corner. There's the White Way development. So that complex has... It's one to two stories, has one building with a tall center core, so that the heights of the complex vary from approximately 30 to 50 feet. And then farther down Edge Hill Avenue, outside of the overlay but still in the neighborhood, are several tall historic homes along 16th Avenue with their side facades on Edge Hill Avenue that range from 35 to 39 feet in height. So the building oriented to Villa Place will be two stories with an overall height of 30 feet 6 inches from grade to the top of parapet. There is no historic context on this block of Villa Place. There are only two buildings that are oriented to the block. The first is the photo on the top, 1503 Tremont. It's addressed to another street, but the entrance is actually off of Villa Place. And the second is 1100 Villa Place, and both of these are non-contributing. So here we have a rendering of the development. So although the Edge Hill portion of the project is taller than most of the surrounding historic context, the most important historic building in the immediate area is a large, previously industrial but now commercial, complex with a variety of heights. So staff finds that the form, as well as the height and scale of the proposed development, can be appropriate in this location, given the variety of land uses and building forms in the immediate area, as well as the context of taller structures nearby and the fact that White Way has a deeper setback, which will help avoid creating a canyon-like effect. And also, the project does transition from three stories to two stories as it enters the residential area of the district. Staff finds that the heights of the proposed buildings to be compatible with the context and to meet the guidelines for the Edge Hill Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay. So just looking at the roof forms, both buildings will have a flat roof with parapet. This roof type you do see in the immediate historic context. The plan does incorporate Juliet balconies for each unit, which you don't see in the immediate residential historic context. Staff finds that they could be appropriate in this instance for several reasons. The proposed development is a multifamily building type that is seen in the larger neighborhood and incorporates more industrial design elements because of its proximity to the White Way development. Since the design and form are somewhat unique to the neighborhoods, staff finds that the balconies could be appropriate and that the project would meet the design guidelines for building and roof forms. So in conclusion, for the preliminary SP, staff recommends approval with the condition that the SP, if approved by council, it says Planning Commission, but ultimately it will be approved by Metro Council, that if it were to be approved, the applicant return to the commission with a second application that includes the full plans with all of the design details that we would need to see for this proposal. So I'm here for questions. The applicant's here.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Hold questions for a moment. We will hold questions for a moment.
Okay. Sorry. Allergies, and I can't hear that well.
No, no. Thank you. Applicant? Yes. Would you like to come forward and speak on behalf of your project?
I think succinctly said anything that needed to be said.
Okay. Can you just come up and let us know that, please, for public record?
Yes, I'm Chris Strickland with Pepperd Road Architecture. I'm here for McLean Towery, Towery Development.
Okay. All right. And what you were saying is that you're in agreement with the recommendations?
Yes, she said that very succinctly.
Okay. Good. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank you.
We're open public hearing. Anyone here on this project? If not, we will close public hearing, and we'll have commission's discussion.
Approval.
Okay. There's a motion to move for recommendation?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. There's none opposed, so the motion passes. Thank you.
Okay. So first, we are going to talk about 921 Benton Avenue, which was removed from consent. 921 Benton is a circa 1930 brick bungalow that contributes to the character of the Waverly-Belmont Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay. This application is for the construction of an addition inclusive of an attached garage and a separate detached garage. Nonhistoric additions in the rear will be removed to make way for the new addition. As you can see here, the lot is unusually deep at nearly 290 feet. The addition takes advantage of the depth of the lot and the grade. Overall, staff finds the proposal to meet the guidelines. The grade drops off away from the street, allowing the applicant to build a basement-level attached garage and a full two-story addition while not going any taller than the historic house. In terms of width, the addition will set in appropriately on both sides. I'll kind of quickly go through that. On the east, it will step out again after the garage and will be flush with the sidewall of the historic house, as seen here in plan and here in elevation. On the west, it will set in two feet for a depth of two feet. Then a portion of the addition will step out about seven feet wider than the historic house. The property meets the guidelines for an addition that goes wider, because the lot is 60 feet wide and because the house is slightly offset on the lot. Due to the grade, the wider portion of the addition will appear only one story tall, as viewed from Benton. Further back, a second portion will step out about six feet wider, as indicated here. That second projection is slightly lower than the first. Staff finds all this work to meet the guidelines. The one issue we wanted to discuss before you today involves some partial demolition work proposed for the east elevation. The applicant proposes to shorten the paired windows in the back, which staff supports. And they would also like to remove the side door hood and landing seen in this photograph, as per the drawing. Staff agrees that that door itself is not original, but finds that the opening may well be. The railing is certainly very old, if not original. The edge of the hood does hang over the window to the right, but only the added gutter, not the hood itself. Staff recommends that the opening hood and stoop be retained, though the door itself could be changed and would not need to be functional. These features are beyond the midpoint, where MHCC often allows finistration alterations, but this area is very visible on this house, and side entries with hoods are common character-defining features for bungalows. I know the applicant is here, and he will address this further in a moment. The proposed detached garage meets all the guidelines for outbuildings, and staff recommends approval of it, subject to final materials approvals. In conclusion, staff recommends approval with the following conditions: the side door opening hood and stoop will remain, and staff will approve the roofing color, windows, and final pedestrian and garage doors prior to purchase and installation, and staff will approve the HVAC location. You have questions for me?
I do have a question.
Sure.
On the side door...
Yes.
The recommendation says that the opening hood and stoop remains, but you mentioned the ability to have some leeway in treatment of that opening?
Right. We feel like that door itself does not need to stay. That's definitely not an original door. If they wanted to put a different door in that opening, we'd be fine with that. If they wanted to wall it in behind, we'd be fine with that. It's just this appearance that we want to keep there.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jenny. Applicant?
My name is Martin Wick. I'm at 912 Bailey Street, and I'm the architect for this project. We're very happy with the work that we've done with staff on the addition. And as you saw, it was previously on consent, but I think we just didn't agree with the assessment about the door and just wanted to sort of present an argument to potentially remove it. So I think if you look at some of these other pictures that we took, the mortar around the door doesn't look original to the house. It looks like some of that brick might have been redone at some point. So we took a few pictures to sort of show that. The other part of the hood that we wanted to point out is that the brackets are different from the historic house you would expect if the house had been... Or if the awning had been built at the same time, they would have used a similar bracket to the house. Obviously, I think that one's been... The angled part has been covered up with some sort of material, but you can see at the bottom of the bracket, as well as the right edge, a little more detail was used in those pieces. And then the stoop as well, you know, it looks like it's concrete at this point, and there's a ramp that extends all the way to the front of the house, and just seems unlikely that that would have been built at the same time as the rest of the house. The other evidence, I think, is if you look at that side elevation, the original... Or without the door, the elevation was perfectly symmetrical, which, for a lot of historic houses, is something that you can expect to see. And it seems like adding that door in was something that happened later down the line. Historic houses also rarely had access to a second floor in the attic. That was something that would often be added later in time as well. That door currently accesses a stair, which is about two feet from the door, which is also a very odd feature to get to that attic space. And so with all of those points, we sort of felt like that door likely was not historic to the original house and felt that we could bring that argument to you to at least discuss. So we wanted to make those points, and that's all I have to say. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer as well.
So on the photograph that we're looking at, right behind the ramp, there's a white opening into the basement? Is that just crawl space access or basement access?
There's actually a full-height basement. Sorry, I didn't catch that in that last picture, below. As we mentioned, the site slopes off pretty steeply in the back, and most of the basement is currently dug out to a full height. And actually, the door to the basement is also right behind where that new door... The door opening that we're discussing is. The stair comes down towards the exterior wall from the inside.
But is that white thing, is that an access door? Is it a coal chute? What do you think that is?
Might have been a window. There's actually one on the other side of that stoop as well, that's a same-size opening. They're both, I think, just plywood-covered right now, and the basement was in really poor condition, so we did not spend very much time rummaging around in it. So I'm not sure from the inside what that condition was.
If the door were to be retained, would that create... Even if it was a false door, would that create a problem with the interior program?
I mean, if we do a false door, no, it wouldn't. If we're just covering it up, it's... You know, I think part of it is... It's something that can kind of be a struggle with working with historic houses. If you are just turning it into a false door, you know, now we just have this stoop on the outside of the house that doesn't really serve a function anymore. And again, it's hard to... I think, in our opinion, it's hard to say that that stoop and the awning were necessarily historic either. But besides the point, no. It would not be a huge problem for us if we just covered up the door from the inside.
If you were to remove the door, would you just brick it up to look like the rest of the brick?
Yes. Yes.
When you're saying you're not sure if that stoop was original to the house, did you look to see more in detail towards the brick? Was there... Looked like there was...
I mean, some of the pictures...
That it was an add-on?
Some of those pictures that we took kind of up close, you know, that concrete step just there on the outside of the house is... It seems unusually large. You know, the bricks kind of crumbling around it. There... We do have, and I don't think it's included anywhere in the presentation, one of the old images of a... Or one of the old drawings, I think, when they did like a renovation of the house, has something on the side of the house, but it's further back than this stoop is. And so it's hard to say whether maybe they moved a stoop at some point or what the purpose of that was, but that didn't seem relevant since it wasn't in the same location. But the... You know, we haven't tried to chip off... You can see, it kind of looks like it's coated in maybe a painted concrete now at this point. We didn't try to chip any of that off yet to see if there is some sort of original block underneath it or anything like that. But if it is a solid concrete stoop, that's also very atypical of a historic house.
Just to clarify, staff is not asking that the floor of the stoop be retained, but just the door and the hood over the door? The floor could be redone? The concrete block, that's obviously added later. Our concern was the door and the hood, so a new stoop could be created underneath.
I guess that's what I was asking, is the hood, you know, not specifically the stoop, but was there any indication to you all that that was... Is or is not original?
For the... You're talking about the actual...
Yeah. Yes, the hood.
The few comments that I made about the brackets, I think, are one point of evidence. I think the fact that it is built so close to that window is very atypical of, you know, if you think about that overall elevation being pretty much symmetrical, to just sort of come back in and stick an awning that's almost hanging over a window is... It's a poor design idea that's asking for trouble when the water runs off of that into, you know, a window opening. You know, it's... While I say it's probably... I don't think it's original. It at least does look like it might have been added on not that long after the house was built, but it's hard to gauge exactly what that timeframe would be and whether that makes the awning historic or not.
That's the debate.
Right.
Okay. Okay. Anything else, commissioners?
Could you tell upstairs what it... Was it used as a separate apartment at one point in time?
Yes, there is a kitchen up there. The two dormers... There's two dormers on the back of the house, which you can see in one of the pictures that included. So that picture on the left there, those two dormers, there's a kitchen in the right and then a bedroom in the left one, and then there's two more bedrooms. I think there might have been four or five people living up there at one point.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Open public hearing? Close public hearing? Commissioners, any other discussions?
You know, after looking at the evidence, the photographs, the mortar, the stoop, I do know that a lot of these homes that were built originally as single-family homes were then converted to apartments and broken up into different units. I think the configuration of the upstairs tends to support that, given the symmetrical nature and the sort of odd placement of that door. I would tend to... I realize you could call... You can flip the coin and call it either way, but I would give the benefit of the doubt to the applicant as far as that not being original to the house.
I agree with you, Commissioner Stewart.
Anything else? Okay. Are we ready to move a motion?
So based on that, with respect to 921 Benton Avenue, I recommend approval with the conditions for the staff, except for Condition 1.
There's a motion?
Second.
There's a second? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
None opposed, so the motion passes. Thank you.
Next is 1612 Douglas Avenue. Just get to it here. Okay. 1612 Douglas Avenue is a non-contributing building in the Eastwood Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay. A demolition permit has been issued for the existing house. The zoning here allows for two units. The immediate historic context consists of one- and one-and-a-half-story houses. These range in height from about 20 to 27 feet tall. The proposed duplex is a true two-story with a total height of just over 29 feet and an 18-foot eve height. The infill is proposed to be approximately 39 feet 6 inches wide, while the historic houses nearby are between 28 and 32 feet wide. Staff finds that the width, height, and two-story form are all inappropriate to the historic The site plan indicates that the house would sit about 40 feet from the front property line. Staff recommends that the front setback be moved up closer to 34 feet from the front property line to align with the historic context. The side setbacks meet base zoning at five feet on both sides, but as discussed, this creates a house that's significantly wider than the historic context. The materials are appropriate with final staff review and approval. The primary roof is side-gabled with a shallow 412 pitch. While the roof form is appropriate, staff finds the slope is flatter than is typical for the historic context. The side elevations both have two sections of blank wall that are wider than 13 feet. Staff recommends additional window openings be added. The site plan shows that these two front doors will be recessed from the front gabled projections by about 2 feet 9 inches and will be covered by a shed roof. Staff recommends that a true front porch be added with a depth of at least six feet. The proposed outbuilding could meet the guidelines as submitted. However, as the appropriate eve and ridge heights are based on the primary structure and staff is recommending that it be redesigned, staff recommends disapproval of the outbuilding until a primary structure is approved. Staff recommends disapproval of the proposal, finding it does not meet the following sections of the design guidelines for the Eastwood Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay: 2B-1A for height, 2B-1B for scale, 2B-1C for setback and rhythm of spacing, and 2B-1F for orientation. Questions for me?
Just for the record, we did get comment from Councilman Withers...
Yes, thank you, Councilman.
On this project.
He did. Not sure if the applicant is here? Yes, okay.
Oh, right. Here we go. Had a question here. Applicant? Is the applicant here? Yes, please come forward.
My name is Brad Sayers with Four Square Design Studio. It was presented to me...
And your address, please.
Oh, 863 Kind of Tack Lane. It was indicated to me after the design was submitted that there was a restriction of width of 34 feet. So I was not made aware of that until the design was completed and already submitted to you guys. So we do have a backup plan that I have been working on with a new design that does maintain that width and height requirement. It also increases the front-to-back pitch, as requested, as well. It also increases the front-to-back pitch as requested as well, which we will be putting together a new package to present to the commission for approval for that.
So did this revision not get in time?
No, it didn't. I literally-
We haven't seen the revision.
Okay. So that means we really can't review that?
I have a copy of it with me, but, but it's not been presented to the commission appropriately, so-
Sure. We would want the staff to, to review it first before we would have a purview of that.
Agreed.
Okay. Yeah, so-
So you can make a decision on what's before you, or if the applicant agrees, it can be removed from the agenda?
Right. That, that would be your decision whether you would want to remove it or defer it?
I would like to defer it.
Okay, all right. And then you'll work with staff to, further on with staff?
Yes, correct.
Then, do we need to vote on, on the deferral, Robin? Okay. Is there a motion to defer? There is, and second, all in favor? All right, so we will defer, and thank you for continuing to work with staff on that.
All right, thank you.
So there's no public hearing on that? Okay.
Okay. Next up is 1314 to 1320 Fifth Avenue North. It's a circa 1960 one-story commercial structure that does not contribute to the historic character of the Germantown Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay. MHDC staff issued a administrative permit to demolish the existing structure earlier this month. The site is located within the Germantown National Register of Historic Places boundaries. One of the conditions of approval is that the curb cut that you see here in the, in the image on the top, that it be removed and that the brick sidewalk that's typical of Germantown be restored. The application is to construct a townhouse development, which is allowed in the National Register Development Zone. There will be six townhouses along Fifth Avenue North and seven townhouses in the rear of the lot. Here are the townhouses that will face Fifth Avenue North. The townhouses will have a ridge height of approximately 33 feet from grade, which does meet the design guidelines. The facade that faces Fifth Avenue North are approximately 85% brick, which does meet the design guidelines. The applicant is proposing a brick that is a gray-black in color. The design guidelines state, quote, "The color of masonry should be similar to historic colors of the same or similar materials." Traditional brick colors range from red, oranges, to dark red. The proposed gray-black brick is not within the range of typical red bricks found on the historic buildings within the Germantown area. Staff therefore recommends that the applicant choose a brick that is in the range of orange-red to dark red. The applicant is also proposing brick to grade. Typically, a building's foundation is visually distinct from the predominant exterior wall material, usually accomplished with a change of materials. In this case, because the form is a modern townhouse design, staff recommends that a soldier course or some other brick detail be incorporated at the foundation line to delineate the difference between the foundation line and the wall above. Here are the side and rear facades of the Fifth Avenue North townhouses. They do have a 1012 side gable roof form at the front and a flat roof form at the rear. The design guidelines do not allow for rooftop decks in the National Register zone, so even though the townhouses do have flat-roofed areas, the applicant is not showing any access to the roof to use that as a rooftop deck. Here are six of the seven interior townhouses. They will have similar ridge and eve heights to those that are facing Fifth Avenue North. There is some difference because there is a substantial grade here on the site. These units are oriented to face the interior courtyard, which staff finds to be appropriate. And here is the one townhouse that's at the very rear of the lot. It's also oriented to face the interior courtyard. Here are some images that the applicant submitted that give a pretty good idea of the overall scale. This is from the alley looking towards Fifth Avenue North. Fifth Avenue North facade. Detail the Fifth Avenue North facade looking towards the interior courtyard. And here are some context photos. The photo on the top is directly to the right. The photo on the bottom is across the street. Again, there's quite a bit of development that was done in the last 10 to 15 years. The townhouses on the top, the commission approved, and the middle one, the commission approved, and the one on the bottom, I believe, was done prior to the overlay. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval with the following condition: One, the curb cut along Fifth Avenue North be removed and the sidewalk replaced with bricks to match the existing brick sidewalks. Two, the finished floor height be consistent with the finished floor heights of the adjacent historic houses. Three, the foundation line be delineated with a soldier course or other brick detail. Four, staff approve the window and door selections. Five, staff approve the brick selection and that the brick be within the range of orange-red to dark red. Six, staff approve the materials of the footbridges, interior courtyard paving, and interior walkways. And finally, seven, staff approve all pertinences included but not limiting, limited to lightning, walkways, gutters, gates, et cetera. With these conditions, staff finds that the proposed projects meets the design guidelines for Germantown. Happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is here if you have questions.
Not at the moment. Thank you, Melissa. Applicant, please?
Good afternoon. Nick Dryden with Dryden Architecture and Design, 1107, 1107 Carruthers Avenue. Just real quickly, want to thank staff for working with us on this. We felt we're comfortable with all the staff approvals for, kind of ordinary approvals for brick color, windows, all the impertinences. The curb cut mentioned at the street is being removed because we're pushing all the vehicular access to the site, thankfully, to the alley, so we get rid of this big, street-facing parking lot that's in front of the current building. So we're, we're really excited to be able to kind of continue that street edge that we all have grown to love about Germantown. And the sidewalk obviously will be replaced with the, the matching brick that pervades the historic district of Germantown. So any questions? Happy to answer.
Any questions? Right, no moment? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Open public hearing? Closed public hearing? Okay, commissioners? Questions or a motion?
I think that's a really nice project for Germantown. You know, just getting rid of, you know, the parking lots and just older design elements, but then bringing it in. So I agree with all of staff, and obviously Nick, you know, also agrees and works in these districts a lot. So, you know, with that, regarding 1314 through 1320 Fifth Avenue North, I move for approval with staff recommendations.
There's a motion, there's a second, all in favor? Aye. Okay, unanimously approved. Thank you.
Okay. Next up is 413 Bushnell. It's a 60-foot wide lot that is vacant and was formerly part of the lot next door at 415 Bushnell. And that's the lot on the map to the top, to the north of it. This application is for infill development. This lot is part of the Little Hollywood section of Lachlan Springs, where there's a significant collection of early to mid-20th century Spanish colonial revival stucco houses. On this block of Bushnell, there's a mix of one-to-one-half story stone, brick, and stucco houses. So here's some examples. The house on the top is the one directly to the left. The one in the middle is directly to the right. And then on the other side of that is a Spanish colonial revival one-story house. There's some kind of mid-century minimal traditionals, kind of transitional Tudor to minimal traditionals. And then again, another Spanish colonial revival house. And here are two examples of infill that the commission has approved in the Little Hollywood neighborhood, kind of harking back to that Spanish colonial revival style. Here is the site plan. The infill will meet all base zoning setbacks, and its front setback is appropriate to the historic context. The house was shifted on the lot to accommodate a driveway on the left side, which staff finds to be appropriate because there is no alley. There might be an alley that's math, but there's no functional alley behind this lot. Here is the front facade. The applicant is proposing a two-story infill with a flat roof. The fiber cement panels and detailing are a modern take on the stucco Spanish colonial revival houses in Little Hollywood. The predominant form along Bushnell is one-to-one and a half stories, but staff finds that a two-story form could be appropriate in this location for several reasons. The overall height of the house is comparable to the heights of the two adjacent historic one-and-a-half story houses. In addition, the flat roof form helps to keep the overall height of the two-story form minimal. The flat roof form is appropriate here because the Spanish colonial revival houses of Little Hollywood do have those flat roof forms. However, staff recommends that the two-story portion be pushed back further so that there's, so that there's a one-story portion beyond the front porch, and the second story is behind the front wall of the house by several feet. Just before I go forward, yesterday, or maybe the day before, the applicant did send me revised drawings meeting this condition. I'm not showing them here because it gets confusing for the commissioners and the public to have kind of two different things that you're looking at. But the, the applicant has met staff's condition, so, so thank you to the applicant for that. Again, here are some massings showing the previous proposal. Actually, the one, I should explain this, actually, the one on the left is, shows what was originally submitted and is actually more indicative of what the revised drawings show us. And the one on the right is what was part of the staff recommendation. Again, here are some more massing models. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval with the following conditions: The finished floor height be consistent with the finished floor heights of the adjacent historic houses. Two, MHDC approve the front setback in the field. Number three and four, in the revised drawings, the applicant did satisfy, according to staff, so that's setting that front, that second story back and then adding a walkway that that's reflected in the revised drawings. Five, staff approve the final details and dimensions and materials of the windows and doors. Also, we approve the, there's a vertical metal siding, which I don't think I pointed out. On the one bay, it's a vertical metal siding. Staff does find that that could be appropriate, but we just want to approve the final material. And then finally, staff approve the location of the HVA scene and other utilities. With these conditions, staff finds that the proposal meets Section 2B of the Lachlan Springs Design Guidelines. Happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is here.
Thank you, Melissa. Applicant?
Okay. Hi, my name is David Baird. I'm architect with Building Ideas Architecture at 5411 Centennial Boulevard. I'd like to thank Melissa for guiding us through the appropriate recommendations, and we agree with the recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Open public hearing? Closed public hearing? Commissioners? And when we make a motion, do we need to specifically note those two items?
Since what you're making a motion on are the drawings before you, I would keep all those conditions in and just make it as, as you have it now.
Well, given that, I make a motion to approve the staff recommendations at 413 Bushnell Street. There's a motion? There's a second? All in favor? Unanimously approved, so motion passes.
Good afternoon. So here's an application for 1311 and 1313 Second Avenue North. You'll recognize the address, it's, was the same address, addresses as an application you saw last month. That was an application to rehab two historic structures and connect them with additions at the rear and between the buildings, and that application last month was not approved. The applicant has made revisions and submitted a new proposal. I'll forego going over the previous application in much detail unless you'd like, and I'll just kind of get into the new proposal and sort of, I'll come back to it, but just cutting to the chase, staff is recommending approval with conditions of the new proposal. Just a little bit more background, these are two turn-of-the-century folk Victorian houses. The one on the left is a frame structure with a gable L form. The one on the right is a front gabled form, and that house is brick, the one on the right. And as I said, the, the application is similar in many ways. First being that it's, the applicant would like to rehab the two historic structures, and in doing that, they'll repair and replace deteriorated exterior materials. Staff asks to evaluate both the structures in, in great detail, or closely, I should say, with the applicant in order to determine which specific elements can be repaired and which, which may be replaced. The proposal also indicates that the brick on 1313 Second Avenue, which is the one on the right, would be whitewashed or painted white. The guidelines only allow for brick to be painted in a few situations, and then, when appropriate, the paint must match the original brick color. As you can see, this brick has already been painted. Therefore, painting it, repainting it may be appropriate. However, as I said, staff recommends that if the building is painted, that the paint color should match the original brick, the color of the original brick. I should, I didn't include this in the staff recommendation, but I should have also said that removing the paint or stripping it would also be appropriate. And I think the applicant may be open to that, so I'll let him tell you more about that when he comes up. An original side port, well, I forgot to show you all my pretty pictures up there. So there's an aerial view. As you can see, this property is on the eastern edge of the overlay, and it's directly across the street from an industrial site. And a lot of the context has been eroded around the area. I guess now moving on to the additions. An original side porch on the brick house has been enclosed. The proposal indicates that that porch would be altered. As I said, it's enclosed, it's got a plywood wall on it now, and the proposal would replace that. The plans show it being replaced with brick. Reopening or altering that porch, since it's already been modified, is appropriate. But staff would ask that the material that replaces the current enclosure should reestablish and maintain the visual openness of the porch. An option might be that instead of filling it in with a, with a brick wall, fill it in with glass or a sort of a window type of material. And I believe the applicant's all right with that condition as well. The rear addition, the form of the rear addition is similar to what was seen last month. Last month, there was also the connection between the two buildings. The current proposal does not have that middle connection. The addition at the rear has stepped in from both buildings on the outer sides and then connects to sort of, for to form a U shape. And it's the type of addition that we wouldn't really approve or support anywhere else, but on, in Germantown with the eclectic character, the mixed industrial and residential and commercial all sort of mixed in together with a deteriorated or eroded historic context, staff finds that this type of addition could be appropriate here on this edge of Germantown. And this, this block, I should also add, is not in the National Register District. If you're looking at the addition from the right, the rear addition will, as I said, step in from that brick wall, and then it goes back with a hipped roof mass. Walls will be stucco with ample windows. The primary roof will be hipped form with asphalt shingles. Those materials are appropriate. From the house on the left, 1311, the project will not be highly visible because there is a commercial building immediately adjacent. So the, the need for having a consistent window pattern is, is not like it is on the other side. But the materials will be stucco and, and the same roof as the other, which again, is appropriate. The hipped roof form, I hope you can see it on your screens, is, has dormers on the, the left and right sides and on the rear. The primary roof, roof height and eve height, those are between the, the two corresponding heights of the historic houses. of the historic houses. So staff finds that the height and scale is appropriate for the, for these two historic houses. Staff recommends approval of the proposed rear addition and rehab to 1311 and 1312 Second Avenue North with the following conditions: that the original roof form is retained and reinforced if necessary. The staff shall approve the replacement of any windows, doors, siding, trim, porch columns prior to replacement. Staff shall approve new materials added for things like the porch floor, that the brick shall, may be repainted, repainted to match a color, a color matching the original roof. And then I'll add to that, that it also could be, the paint could be stripped, which would be considered rehab. And that the nonoriginal side porch on the brick structure may be reestablished with materials and a design that maintain the visual openness and character of the porch. And with those conditions met, staff finds that the proposal meets the design guidelines for rehab and new construction in the Germantown Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay.
Thank you, Sean. So, in your additional comments about removing the paint, and they say you wanted to leave it exposed, so there's guidelines on, that you would share with the applicant on proper removal of paint?
The guideline, yes, there are guidelines, and it's something that we would be happy to assist them with, providing additional information. We've already talked about using solvents and non-abrasive types of paint removers, you know, maybe can, sometimes, or you might need to see what, what the paint actually is. If it's latex, it might come off easily, or with a light pressure wash. We've advised against sandblasting, but kind of have to see how easy it comes off, and start with the least intensive or least caustic method and escalate it as necessary.
Good. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions to Sean at the moment? Okay. Applicant?
No, that's perfect. That's perfect. I got Stephen Baskin, 715 Bradford Avenue. Clay Adkison is actually the applicant of record, but I own these properties, and Clay is who presented last month. He's on his honeymoon, so can't be with us today. But I just, first of all, this has been a long process, and I appreciate staff's, just, they've been great from the start. We've worked with them for over a year. Sean's been great and very helpful. It's been our number-one objective to have them very involved in this process. As Sean mentioned, kind of understanding the context of Second Avenue North and what's going towards the river, excuse me, what's going towards the river is, you know, large, large, kind of Atlanta-based developers coming in, and I think preserving this is going to be a great addition to the Germantown historical neighborhood. So, it's always been our objective and our intent to maintain the integrity of these historical homes. And I agree with everything that Sean just presented on. The one thing that I would ask, and I was actually able to meet with Sean on Monday in regards to just some options for painting the home, but I would prefer removing the paint as well. The picture actually looks better than it does in person, but the, the paint color is almost like a mustardy-yellow brown, and it's just, it's not a beautiful color by any means. So, I absolutely am going to try to remove it to the best of our ability. It has been painted seven times, and three of those seven is lead-based paint, so obviously there are some things to safely remove that. So, the one thing that I would like to ask the commission is, if at all possible, having it, I know Sean said changing the language to support removing it, I'd like to see that reflected as a condition, but also, we don't want to paint this stark white or anything, but if we do, it's only been since Monday, so we, I've had three, three days really to reach out to companies in regards to, can you do it? Can you do it safely? And is it, is it possible to do it? So, I would just really, I think we've tried to work very closely with staff, and because it's been painted seven times, and because I not only own 1311, 1313, and 1315, I would like to have, the siding house itself will be painted as well. So, kind of having those play well together, I think, would make it even a little bit more unique and a prettier development. So, just if at all possible, maybe if the commission would support either just a neutral kind of ivory or a bone, something very neutral, not something that's going to be something that's snow white or anything. Or, what we also recommended and asked of staff is, we identified previously used colors, and there were a couple colors that I would be completely okay with repainting that were not that yellow. But on the rear of the home, you can see out of those seven times it's been painted, there's a couple that I think would be really pretty for both of those. So, maybe just if commission would be willing to, if exploring the option of removing it entirely cannot be done, then maybe just including some language as, as far as a condition that you would support it being painted again, agreed upon color, other than the red and orange. I don't think red and orange is going to duplicate the original condition, and I don't really think staff would want it painted red, orange either. So, if there's any comments or questions.
Any questions to the applicant at the moment? Okay. Well, we just want to say thank you for working with the staff over this period of time, and it's challenging to do that over historic overlays, but yes, and thank you for preserving these homes.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. We'll see if we can add that as a motion, or if we need to even. All right, open public hearing? Closed public hearing? All right, commissioners? Since we've made some comments on that, do we, should we add that as a recommendation, or is it necessary?
I think it's easy enough to add that it may be, that it also may be stripped or have the paint removed.
Appropriately.
Yeah.
But, but we can't recommend white or ivory because that doesn't meet the guidelines.
Right. Following guidelines, then, can we?
Staff recommendation.
Yeah, per staff recommendation. Should we just have that as a referral? What does it say about painting under guidelines?
That if brick is, needs to be painted or has already been painted, it should be a red-orange color, like historic brick.
Okay. That, that's pretty clear. All right. All right.
Do you mind if I say a little more?
Can we? Okay, sure, commissioners. Yeah, sure. Come on.
I just feel like...
Just come, come on.
I just feel like a little bit that I'm unfairly punished by somebody having painted it seven times. That's not a red or an orange. It's almost as if, you know, I'm trying to go through the proper channels to make sure that this is done and everybody supports it, but unfortunately, it's been painted seven times, and none of those colors are red or orange. And again, my, it's almost like we could be fighting a battle that doesn't need to be fought, and if somebody can go out there and remove it, that's what I would prefer. But I just don't like to be limited to red or orange, especially having had this, the history of this home, it's been painted seven times, and taking it back to one of those previously painted seven may make it more, you know, that's part of the history of this home now, so just for what it's worth.
Okay, we will take that in consideration.
Thank you.
So with respect to this, it's a wonderful project. It's so good to see these projects being retained, especially when so much of the neighborhood has eroded over time. The, I think that the recommendation to, you know, allow, certainly endorse, removal of the paint's good. As far as the guidelines and the color of the paint, I think that, that those guidelines were adopted by the neighborhood, and it's, it's sort of arbitrary for us to change that just on our own. I do think that we should give allowance for staff to work with them. I think in some of these guidelines, there are more leeway to go more toward a brown or other color, and I think the way to tie these two together may be through trim colors or through other ways to, to tie the two structures together. So, based on that, I recommend approval with the staff conditions, including the stipulation that they shall be allowed, if the applicant chooses to remove the paint in manner appropriate to historic guidelines and the Department of the Interior standards, and that they will work with the staff for paint colors if a painting is selected.
We understand the motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. There's a second? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All right. It's unanimous? Okay. Thank you very much.
I was disappointed to learn that Wasco Company in Germantown no longer does paint removal, which was kind of everybody's, what everybody knew, that the company that did all the paint removal. So, he's, hopefully, we'll find someone else that can do that. The next case is for infill at 1203B Lilian Street. It is a vacant lot that actually is part of a lot that fronts Fatherland Street, has a lot with double frontage. Typically, house behind a house is not appropriate, but on a lot with double frontage, the, a new infill on the rear of the lot facing Lilian Street would actually complete the rhythm of the street where there currently is no structure. So that was the location. It's actually even not where the fence is, but further back into the trees is where the lot that is currently vacant, or the back of the Fatherland Lot is. So, what is proposed here is a new house on the lot facing Lilian Street. The new house will be one-and-a-half stories tall. It will be 25 feet 6 inches tall from floor to the peak, with the foundation and grade adding three to approximately five feet. The building width will be 27 feet wide. It shifted, I'll just flip through the elevations. There's the left side. The house will be shifted to the right side of the lot. So this side door, there's actually kind of a driveway that terminates there, but of course, there's no alley, so a driveway in the, from the front is appropriate. There's the right side and the rear. Materials are common infill materials: cement fiber siding, split face foundation, asphalt shingle. Staff would ask to approve roof colors and window and door selections. But staff recommends approval of the proposed one-and-a-half-story infill at 1203B Lilian Street with the conditions that the finished floor height is consistent with the finished floor heights of adjacent houses, to be verified by staff, that the front setback shall be consistent with setbacks of adjacent houses, that the window and door selection, selections are approved by staff, that the roof color is approved by staff, and that utility connections and HVAC units are located behind the midpoint of the building on a non-street-facing facade. And meeting those conditions, staff finds the project meets the design guidelines for new construction in the Lachlan Springs East End Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay.
Thank you, Sean. Any questions?
I'm just kind of curious, do you see a lot of these with the gable roofs being different angles on each side?
No, not really.
It's giving me Batman vibes.
Yeah, actually, it does sort of have that, sort of like, sort of opposing saltbox I wrote at one point in my staff recommendation, I don't remember if it made the final edits or not, that the two sections were not symmetrical, but that the two sections together gave its balance, if that makes sense. So the, the frontmost and rearmost slopes match, and then the two interior slopes match. So it's sort of a mirrored, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, I'm just curious, I just hadn't seen one before, so I don't know if that was something that y'all, you know, because you, we talk about a lot about roof pitch and, you know, different things, so I don't know if that was something that's, you know, been considered or that you all had a discussion about.
It was noticed, and I guess we didn't have enough of an issue with it to, to call it out specifically.
Because it was in the rear, or?
Because it's infill in a street that doesn't have a very strong historic context, so it's not, you know, in another part of a neighborhood that has very sort of a homogenous or universal, not uniform, uniform forms, it might be more important to match the forms of the historic, but in an area that's almost exclusively either non-contributing or recent infill, it's one of those places where designers can play around a little bit more.
Yeah. Good question.
The designer is here. Do you have any questions?
Applicant, please. You've waited this long. You must come.
My name is Peggy Newman. Peggy Newman Designs. I agree with them. Thank God they're there to help us. I didn't see you. So I agree with what they're saying. There's a couple more in historic that, I've seen that kind of roof line, and I think it's kind of cool, but he's right. I think, is this conservation, not preservation? So probably in preservation, I would be more apt to make it more traditional. And that, that is a dormer that sits back two feet. I don't know if you could even tell by the, you know, the four windows there. It's a dormer that sits back two feet. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Peggy.
I'll also add, if you've driven by or know the street, you know that it's also very steep as it goes from Lilian up to Fatherland Street, is probably 30 feet or more. So, it's just one of those lots that's very challenging, so we can be a little bit forgiving on some things where we might be, if we were a typical flat lot, we'd probably have seen something different.
Sean, can you just scroll back to the picture, site plan with other houses? One more, yes, that one. So, I know you probably didn't have this in the recommendation, but the parking pad or driveway, where is, is there an indication of that?
Yeah, so, all of these recently approved houses in the last three or four years, three, five years, whatever it is, have driveways because, as you see, there's no alley between, and since this is actually a lot that connects, there's, again, no alley. So, here are driveway strips. This section, little image on the left is the site plan, so these driveway strips, yeah.
Okay. Good.
And they go up to about the midpoint of the building.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that required?
Sure.
The wheel strips?
Sure. Just ask that question, please.
Sorry. Is that, the wheel strips are required, or could we do a regular driveway like the other houses? Or, that was just something I, the builder wanted me just to clarify, and I forgot.
I, I assume we've probably approved both, but strips tend to be what people tend to prefer, so we, it's often in keeping with the historic context.
I've had more complaints about broken ankles on the wheel strips than I can even tell you, so, so I don't know. So I was just wondering if that was a requirement, or, not saying that he doesn't want to do it, we just want to know.
I don't have a strong impression of one or the other being totally appropriate or not.
It's probably going to save him money, so he'll probably go with the wheel strips anyway.
So if it's not under guidelines, then you have some leeway on that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
It could be your decision.
But we would also go by guidelines, right? Yeah. Right. Okay.
The guidelines talk about meeting historic context, so that would be your decision as to what to approve here.
Do we have any questions on that, commissioners? Okay. No? All right. We don't, we're not holding that hill there.
Okay.
Okay. Open public hearing? Closed public hearing? I mean, open, is there anyone? No? Okay. Closed public hearing? Commissioners?
I recommend with respect to 1203B Lilian Street that we approve with staff recommendations and give the applicant the leeway to either use a strip driveway or a solid driveway.
There's a motion?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Unanimous motion. Thank you.
The next item is 1502 Shelby Avenue. So, in January this year, the historic house at 1502 Shelby was severely damaged by a fire. Staff was able to look at the structure after, after the fire, and determined that the extent of the fire damage was so severe that the house was unfortunately not salvageable. So staff issued an administrative permit in February for the demolition of the severely fire-damaged historic house. So, we're looking at the infill to go back on this lot, and the plan before you meets the design guidelines for height, scale, setbacks, rhythm of spacing, materials, roof shape, and orientation. So as proposed, the infill is oriented to Shelby Avenue with parking from the alley. The structure's one and a half stories, and the form is appropriate as the context includes one, one and a half, and two-story homes. The height and width of the house are also appropriate for the historic context. Here we have the right side elevation, and the left, and the rear, and here we have some context photos of homes in the vicinity. And, so, the plan that's proposed actually has been constructed on a lot outside of the overlay. This was the finished product. Keep in mind, this lot where it was built has a steeper grade than on the lot where it's currently proposed, but just thought you'd like to see what it turned out to be. And in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the infill with conditions, which include the standard conditions regarding finished floor height, front setback materials, and utility location. And staff finds that with these conditions, the proposal meets the design guidelines for the Lakeland Springs East End Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay.
Thank you, Melissa. Any questions? Okay. Thank you. Applicant?
Cheyenne Smith at 1627 Long Avenue, and thank you to both Melissa's for working with me on this one, and I approve, or I agree with their approval, or recommendations.
Okay, thank you very much, applicant. Open public hearing? Closed public hearing? Commissioners?
Madam Chairman, I move. I move for approval based on staff recommendations.
Okay. There's a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous approval. All right. That is our final project? All right. Thank you, Ben, for coming.
Okay, because I've got a appointment. I have a appointment.
You've got to go. Yes, well, we've made our call, and, Robin, is there any other business? Okay, well, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.